I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in which we represent one nation, our individual liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you all for being here for Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting of the school board. Can I get a roll call, please?
This is Danzo Steele.
Here.
Mrs. Liskin.
Here.
Mrs. Martindale.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Here. Moving on to adoption of minutes, I do have some amendments to the agenda for this evening. We're going to add a couple items. The first will be the appointment of Principal Todd Hall to the Bolton Crossing Elementary, the personnel department. Also, we have a resolution that I'd like to present to the board. I'm going to go ahead and read that. This resolution is in reference to House Bill ninety-six, whereas the Southwestern City School District has maintained a fiscally responsible approach to budgeting, resulting in a carefully planned contingency fund equivalent to approximately ten months of operating expenses, which has allowed the district to avoid seeking new operational revenue since two thousand nine. And whereas the current state budget proposal has passed by the House Bill ninety-six, institutes a cap on school district carryover funds limiting the reserves to thirty percent of the previous year's budget. Which has forced the Southwestern City School District to lose about a hundred and fifty million dollars to contingency funds within a few months. And whereas this proposed cap jeopardized the district's financial stability, the fleet reserves, critical for absorbing unexpected costs such as inflationary pressures, facilities maintenance across our thirty-three campuses, and the risk of lowering our borrowing, thereby increasing future bargaining costs. And whereas the depletion of these reserves would likely necessitate a new operating levy in the near future, placing an additional burden on taxpayers and contradicting the district's long-term commitment to fiscal stewardship and community trust. And whereas the proposed cap, while intended to provide short-term property tax relief, creates long-term financial instability for school districts like the Southwestern City School District, which has relied on prudent financial planning to maintain an exceptional educational standard and exemplary scope of service for our twenty-one thousand students. And now, therefore, it is resolved that the Southwestern City School District Board of Education recognizes that while many in the community, many communities across the state are experiencing difficult financial conditions, the board strongly opposes the carryover funding cap as outlined by House Bill ninety-six, and urges the state senate to remove or significantly modify this provision to protect the financial stability of the school district. Also, it affirms its commitment to responsible fiscal management, ensuring that the Southwestern City School District remains an exemplary steward of taxpayers' dollars while delivering exceptional educational opportunities for all students. It also directs the superintendent and treasurer to continue advocating on behalf of the district to ensure the final state budget reflects the needs of our students and reserves, the district's ability to provide high-quality education without undue fiscal strain. Also encourages Southwestern community, parents, staff, and residents to engage with their state representatives to call for a more comprehensive solution to the fair school funding that also provides property tax relief as part of the process. And I'd like this to be adopted this day, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And I'll open it up to discussion to the other board members. Anybody?
I just wanted to say thank you to superintendent, the superintendent and the treasurer for all their hard work in meeting with state legislators and our legislative liaisons. I know that we have had staff that have contacted legislators as well and members of this board. And so, just thank you to everybody for all their hard work. Continue to reach out to your state legislators and just, you know, advocating for the district and or making changes to the fair school funding plan. So, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work thus far.
Also, before we continue, thank you to me. You know, this district forecasted out five years in advance, and what you and earlier bill-wise, before Randy got here, have done an awesome job in financing. I mean, nobody would ever expect in two thousand nine, our last levy, for us to still be going on with this levy, and I'm asking for taxpayers for more money than they have it. We are in deficit spending, years out, right now, but that was expected. But for a levy that was passed in two thousand nine to keep going for fifteen years, there's something to be said for you and though, and I just want to say, I mean, thank you, you. And on with that, who would like to make a motion to accept this?
So, with the agenda as amended, we have the amendment toward the administrative position in section L one and top rule of the agenda. And then the second amendment, line use, right after the adoption of the agenda, can you give that through a resolution to approve that?
Can I give a motion to approve those adoptions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson, second. And Mrs. Martindale, roll call.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Now, we'll do the resolution for the funding resolution that was presented. Can I give a motion to move that forward?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. D'Angelo Steele. Can I get a second?
Second, Liskin.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskin. Roll call.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Uh, yes. Moving on now to approval of the minutes for the March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five school board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson, second.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. D'Angelo Steele. Can I get any additions or corrections to that? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes. We have no presentations this evening. I'm going to move on to board reports. Any board reports, board members? Seeing none, public participation related to agenda items. We do have a couple people signed up, but first will be Kyra Paul on policies.
If the agenda was in a different direction, by the way, you probably wouldn't have to listen to me talk because you guys may answer these questions when you do your presentation. I see several new policies, revised policies and policies to be presented on the agenda tonight. The first one is the release religious time. We've added portion E sponsoring entity provides current evidence and background checks for all individuals in contact with this entity. Sponsoring entity will refrain from distributing any items, materials, or traits that could disrupt the integrity of the learning environment. We've also added the district shall collaborate with a sponsoring entity to identify a time for religious instruction to be offered during the school day. This in and of itself is an open door to LifeWise Academy. I have absolutely no problem with any student wanting to engage in their religious practices throughout during school day, but this is not safe or in the best interest of the students in our building. I would ask to chaperon an elementary field trip until I have to provide an transportation and have to be background checked through the district because although I will be with the school and staff members, I may be alone with the caregivers, are to simply chaperon a field trip to the school or signing their kids off early. This is not best-sake practices. Also, why are we coordinating with outside entities to have these students leave every single week? Does that mean we will rearrange lunch recess special schedules for them? Do we do that for students during Ramadan that are fasting and praying? If parents and caregivers want their students to take part in extracurricular activity because that's exactly what this is, they should have to do it in the already existing schedule, and if that doesn't work, then I guess they'll just need to do it before or after school hours, just like any other activity. As I'm sure you all are aware, our current political environment is volatile, and education is at the top of the priority list, both federally and with the state of Ohio. But let's not make this discussion political because education is supposed to be nonpartisan. I am very concerned that this board is eliminating school board legislative program policy. It is crucial to stay informed of all the changes and impacts on our district and twenty-two thousand students here. I sincerely hope you are not replacing this position with Omar Chorupi, who does not have educational law experience in this district, the hundred and eighty thousand dollars from their district. Certainly, attending to these matters will not fall under his regular duties outlined in his initial contract, and he paid three hundred dollars a night for that. We are also in the middle of the fight of our lives. That's what it feels like for me with the contract negotiations as it speaks. We are facing the largest budget cut in which ties back into that legislative program policy, and we are going to have less buying power in particular for our bus drivers and other classified staff. And you are removing board negotiating agent supervision controls in that negotiation. Again, I really hope these roles and positions are not being replaced by our policies. It doesn't seem that there is a new policy. These policies take place, so we are kind of left here to wonder and assume. You may cover that later when you talk about all of this goodness here. You're also rescinding the administrator goal policy, and I haven't seen a replacement for that. I hope it's coming. Major goals are to manage the district's various departments, to provide professional advice in the Council of Work Education. It's also analyzing the advantages and disadvantages of each, to implement the management function so as to assure the best and most effective learning activities happening, providing leadership in keeping abreast of current education development, arranging for staff development if necessary, coordinating cooperative efforts for the improvement of learning programs, facilities, and equipment, to develop an effective program of evaluation that includes every position, program, and facility in the district, and to develop and use a team management approach. Why do you want to get rid of this policy? Didn't we spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to buy Mr. Banks and then turn around and pay two superintendent salaries for about five hundred thousand? I would think you would value his abilities, experience, and knowledge if this policy did not be eliminated.
We'll talk about those more in a minute. Moving on now to the next person is Kellyville. Dr. Kellyville.
Thank you to the board for making sure that those of us who have issues or would like to be heard have a space to be heard and heard everything. I would like to urge the board to actually read first and second readings of new or revised policies. This only promotes transparency, something those of you who run for office claim is an important value. I suggest this because it takes no fewer than nine clicks to get to any policy or agenda item were one to want to be informed about it. It's clear that public access to the board is a priority, as evidenced by changing space, knowing we're going to have larger audiences, by the president always saying, hey, we can catch coffee, by all of your email addresses being available to us. So, our public access to you appears to be a priority. It also appears to be a priority, at least here in the state of Ohio, specifically about educational institutions. For example, Governor Dewan recently signed S B one that requires syllabi, course evaluations, and instructor profiles for public institutions of higher learning to be accessed by three or fewer clicks. We need to treat our K through twelve secondary access to public information the same way we treat higher education post-secondary information. I understand our board might be restricted to using boarddocs.com, but with meetings recorded and later uploaded to YouTube, which would be one, maybe two clicks, the public would have a tremendous amount of access, should you either literally read the policies, which most are not that long, or before a vote, provide the public with the gist of that policy. This can help us know if changes came from the legislature, so from the top down, or of the board's own volition. A specific policy that you're covering tonight is my absolute disappointment in the discontinuing of the legislative program that has been in place since nineteen eighty-nine. Not having a specific individual identified to keep you informed of both state and federal goings-on is short-sighted. The issue of the budget and proclamation you just read tonight are an example of how remaining informed of legal and budgetary issues is so very important. I humbly ask the board to defend the rescinding of this policy. Thank you.
We will address some of those later, Kelly. Moving on now, we're going to go to student staff achievement liaison.
Thank you, President Bosso. This evening, we have four items under student achievement. First, we wanted to recognize that recently fifty-six students from the cybersecurity interactive media design and app and simulation programs represented Southwestern City Schools at the Business Professionals of America State Competition. Fifteen students have now qualified for the national competition in Orlando, Florida from May seventh through eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. B P A is an opportunity for students to develop leadership skills, build professional networks, and prepare for future careers. Congratulations to all competitors and best of luck to those advancing to nationals. Also, earlier this month, Grove City High School made history by hosting and winning the district's first-ever home lacrosse game, defeating Westerville Central with a score of eleven to two. And I just want to say, I'm super proud of this, and thank you to the board for giving more athletic opportunities to the kiddos in our district. So, this was history-making, and congratulations to those great hands, great work. Also, congratulations to Southwestern Career Academy early childhood education students, Paige Cordell, Ava Di Matteo, Anika Carrera Castro, Trevor Horn, and Mia Bedillo, who took home honors from the Family Career Community Leaders of America Regional Competition last month. That was mouthful. Mia Bedillo, gold for curriculum and instruction unit. Paige received bronze for team lesson planned presentation. Ava Di Matteo received gold for observation and assessment. Anika Carrera Castro received bronze for team lesson planned presentation, and Trevor Horn received bronze for language and literacy presentation. Great job to those academy students. Congratulations to three Norton Middle School students whose artwork was featured in the Central Ohio Art Education Association annual art exhibition. This regional showcase highlighted the artistic talents of K through twelve students from across seven central Ohio counties. Representing Norton Middle School were Alondra Alvarez Velasco with a collage, Alondra Vera Mendoza with an oil pastel, and Hurele Cortez Morello with a collage. The exhibition held from March eighth through April fifth featured a diverse array of student artwork, including paintings, drawings, and mixed media pieces. Great job to those students. I also wanted to mention, Southwestern City Schools gives back. Finland Middle School's National Junior Honor Society has been hard at work giving back to their community. These students have been doing community service to include packing and sorting at the Mid-Ohio Food Collective in Grove City. Way to lead by example Vikings. The National Junior Honor Society at Finland Middle School has been actively engaged in community service initiatives. These students have participated in volunteer activities, including packaging and sorting at the Mid-Ohio Food Collective in Grove City. Also, Finland Elementary School students collected sixty pounds of aluminum can tabs for the Ronald McDonald House charity last month, which is equivalent to approximately seventy-six thousand eight hundred tabs. Way to go, Finland Eagles. And I see a theme going on with the Finland-area schools, so I challenge the other schools to get involved and let us know what you've got going on. So, great job, Finland. And that's it for me.
Thank you so much. We're going to be moving on now to items for action under fiscal and operational management with Mrs. Peterson.
I'm ready. I bring forward seven items. We're going to start with item one. It is the revised permanent appropriations for this year, twenty-fourth, twenty-five. See X one. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised permanent appropriations. Item number two, investments and financial statements for March twenty-twenty-five. You're going to see X two and X three. It is recommended that in accordance with section one thirty-five, twenty-one-four of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approve March investments and cash position report for the month of March twenty-twenty-five as submitted. Item number three is for payment of bills. You're going to see X four. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of March twenty-twenty-five. Item four is for donations. See X five. We received a total donation amount of seven hundred dollars, and we continue to thank our community donors who contribute and continue to support Southwestern School District. Item number five, authorization to pay bills in accordance with section five seven oh five point four one, Ohio Revised Code. See X six. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for March, which were not processed in accordance with this Ohio Revised Code. Item number six is our master service agreement with Meta Solutions. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the master service agreement with Meta Solutions to provide information technology services from July of twenty-twenty-five through June of twenty-twenty-six. You're going to see X seven. A little background on this one, Meta Solutions has provided like three services to the district for a decade. These services are state software, fiscal support, and hosting. Education Management Information System has support, reporting, like with some reports. It also is a purchasing co-op membership that we use. We use their bus purchasing and utility purchasing co-op to get discount prices. The district added a service through Meta Solutions back in the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and you guys may know this one, it was called the Final Forms. So, the final forms that you see that comes under through Meta Solutions. Final Forms is an electronic platform that provides record-keeping for our emergency medical records, CPR certificates, and other items that's related to the extracurricular activities. This will help staff ensure that all proper documentation is provided and will also be available immediately without having to shuffle through paper forms. So, that's how we have to have that trying to keep it. Meta Solutions is an information technology center. All school districts in Ohio are tied to some form of what they call an I T C. That was the Information Technology Center acronym that I use. In regions throughout the state, there are currently about eighteen of those in the state of Ohio. All school districts use a meta. We pay per pupil for like an amount of thirteen dollars and twenty-six per student for these three services. This per pupil rate has changed over the years, so I thought that was pretty interesting. Not too bad, but like, for example, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, we paid a fee of twelve dollars. And then, back in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we paid a fee of nine dollars and ninety-five cents. So, it's slightly increased by a couple dollars year in year, but not too bad. The last item I'm bringing forward, item number seven, is the college credit plus memorandum of understanding with Columbus State Community College. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached college credit plus memorandum of understanding with Columbus State Community College for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. You would see X eight. Background on this, since the inception of the college credit plus, the district has had a memorandum of understanding in place each year for Columbus State to provide our students with access to college credit hours. After reviewing these items with the treasurer, I would like to move them forward.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Liskin.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskin. Can I get a roll call?
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Moving on now for arguments for action under policy with Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Is this on? Yes, thank you. We have thirty-three policies, some new, some reworked, some extended revise, and to help clarify how we, those policy decisions work, Dr. Dean Fletcher is going to help explain a little bit.
This is too low for me. So, good evening, President Bosso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garci, members of the board. Thank you for having me. I wanted to take a few moments to talk about board policy and how that functions within our district. First, we rely on the district committee that is representative of our Board of Education, district administration, certificated in classified associations to review and keep current board policies. As you might imagine, this is no small feat, given the pace and frequency of legal changes impacting school districts throughout the state and federal language that currently exists. I would like to personally thank our members for their diligence and dedication to this committee. They spend a great deal of time and energy preparing and reviewing content to ensure that our policies are compliant and they're current. Our members include myself, Mr. Garci, Mr. Bosso, Mrs. D'Angelo Steele, Mr. Dan Boland, principal of Jackson Middle School, Ms. Amber Newton, Ms. Christina Newton, Ms. Amber Clark, all members of SWI, Mrs. Tammy Yokum, and Ms. Patty Rudi, both members of O C. Each of these individuals provides important insights and perspectives from their respective roles within the district. Their work on our committee is invaluable. Our district works directly with the legal team at Consortium through Northeast Ohio Learning Associates, known as N E O L A. Most districts either utilize N E O L A or O S B A, have been affiliated with both and other districts. To vet changes in language and to look at model policies that comply with state and federal mandates. Our committee reviews policy recommendations throughout this whole year. Generally, we have a fall and a spring review to follow the cadence of the annual budget updates in July and after the January updates are provided by the state. However, we do meet more frequently when there have been changes at the federal or state level that might impact our policy language. We will bring forward policies as a district to review the language to be updated, to be current, and/or to match our procedures within the district. Our policies are accessible on our website via our active board policies link. Our policies are organized by sections, so Meredith has a slide up here so that you can see these sections. Each section is specific to the function of the organization, so you can see programs, finances, property, or people, to include students, professional staff, and administrators. Tonight, there are twenty-nine policies that will go before the Board of Education, we reviewed thirty-three, and then will go for a first reading. You will notice that some of the policies are the same content, are represented, represented as you can, in multiple sections of our board policies. For example, when you look at the drug-free workplace updates, they've been adjusted within four policies for four different sections of the people we serve. So, that one change impacted policy language for students, for our professional staff, for our administrators, and for our teachers. Additionally, those policy changes in language at the state level changed two policies that pertain to school grounds and public participation at school events. So, one change at the state level that's required impacted six policies. Additionally, as we think about other examples, I think that it's important to think about when you have those timelines on some of the state and federal language, it does require us to review more frequently. So, you've seen some of that on our board agendas because some of these house bills have a specific data implementation required, so we had to meet more frequently. So, again, I want to thank the committee for their dedication to this work. Additionally, our committee has been reviewing policies that have been unreplicable for long periods of time without review. So, as a best practice, you periodically pull those policies to see if the language is relevant and current. For example, policy twenty-one-ten and twenty-one-ten point zero-one, they were adopted in nineteen ninety-one. For example, policy 2110 and 2110.01, they were adopted in 1991. Our committee reviewed these to ensure these policies were still relevant, accurate, and compliant. We concluded that they were. You will see that there is a date of latest review reported at the bottom to show that we were reviewing these policies consistently and that we're essentially pruning the garden, the language is old and outdated and no longer relevant. So I give this example. This is our graduation requirement policy, policy 5460. Dr. Shu, you're very familiar with this one. Since its inception in 1994, it has been updated 17 times. And so some of those are changes in credit requirements, some of those are changes in the actual name of the course for the credits required. So as the state language changes and those requirements change, we must adjust our policies. And then I just wanted to outline, as you look at some of the policies before you tonight, again, some of those are required directly from Ohio Revenue Code. The other one that we spoke of tonight in terms of the religious instruction, which is policy 5223, that one is actually a specific clarification because students cannot miss time tied directly to the state learning standards. So if there are standards tied to a course, student cannot be pulled out of school for any reason regarding whatever the entity is. So that was clarified in there. And then at this point, I will pivot back to Ms. DeAngelo Steele and have her answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Luescher. Do you guys have any questions? I know Chris, Mr. Bosso, and I spent many hours with the policy committee, went over a lot of these. So do you guys have any questions for the board or us? Dr. Luescher, she's the...
The one that was brought up and addressed this evening about the liaison, the legislative liaison. When we were talking about that, we all as board members do that, is why we took that out. We all contact our board, try to talk to them, especially right now.
Why don't you read it like this?
So that's why that was kind of taken out the way it was. Some of the other things that were taken out were just as far as our goals. The goals were from 90 something, if I remember right, that things had changed and we're making new goals. So these are updated goals, so just two little tidbits on those.
So Chris. Clarification.
Yes.
But I think I got you.
The ones that make sense, because that's where my brain is going. The ones that's rescinded is because we're making updates anyways.
It could be, it could be, but some of it might just be outdated. Like what Luescher was saying. Don't think that me and Denise and this board is doing this on our own. We, all parties in this district are involved. Teachers, Oxy, all of them are involved, administration. So it's a collaborative of what we're going to do with these policies. It ain't just us board up here doing it on our own to let everybody know. I mean, we talk about them, we go over them, we go through them before we get to the meeting. And I know the last meeting we were in, what, two hours at least? It was a while. So just so everybody knows that.
I think, did he answer questions?
Yes. That's what I was asking because I know there's school district goals and we have objectives. We've talked about those. I support his mind, he gave it exactly. And so I knew, I was like, this is 1989. Don't say that I was nine years old. But I figure, because these are old, eventually somewhere in upcoming policies, things that we have been working on will eventually work its way into a current work.
So just two things there. So much has changed in terms of the accountability mechanisms of the state of Ohio. So those policies that were developed in 1991, again, you think the one needs assessment, the OLAC, the Ohio Improvement Process, all of these things are tied to a larger accountability that were required to provide all that information, to set clear targeted goals as a district and also as a middle day improvement plan. And that all funnels into one location. And then some of that is tied to federal funding. So the mechanism changed, just like the teacher evaluation system changed. So some of that language is old. But for example, the educational philosophy, we thought that was good language, just like the pedagogy, that should stay there. And so it was, you know, again, very much a collaborative conversation where each one of our entities talks about the perspective and ultimately what that will need for implementation for their groups. And quite frankly, when we get those district renewed policies, most times it's somebody within the organization who says, hey, this language is not exactly accurate, we need to clarify it because our processes are different and the work has changed. So.
Dr. Luescher. Can you just give a little bit more insight, policy 8142, the criminal history record check for contract and school purposes? I know that we've been, you know, safety and security and background checks and all those kinds of things. So I'm just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit.
I have a small technical. Okay, thank you. All right. Last year, and it was a two-year process, and I want to thank Rob Moore, you're here. Give a shout out. Okay. So walk with me on this. Certified employees are tied to an OHID. And that includes, that's all, that's in your licensure portal, aligned with your background checks. Our classified staff or our professional staff was tied to something called a ZID. They had to transition that to an OHID. And then there was an increase then in terms of the information you receive and their clearance of the background checks. This piece here is following that same line of thinking and accountability where rat back is utilized for those third-party providers that we might use that would come into contact with our students and our schools. So it's just extending that expectation for those third-party providers. So to go, it's like first certified staff, then our professional staff, and now the expectation of the bar is set for that third-party provider.
Thank you. Any more questions? In school or in that one? I recommend, I recommend the board vacation for the first reading of the few policies, renumbered, deleted, rescinded, and revised policies. Right? Okay. Yes. So I can motion. I need a second.
Second, please.
Second, Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie. Roll call.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on now for curriculum. Is there anything curriculum you'd like?
Nothing.
All right, thank you so much. Camille, anything for facilities? I don't think there is, but you wouldn't mention anything.
I know.
All right, thank you so much. I will move on now to students, staff, and faculty with Mrs. Liskini.
Thank you so much. The senior students, school community, we have four action items. The first one is fuel a part of middle school students to travel to Washington DC. The part of middle school eighth grade students have the opportunity to travel to Washington DC. The trip is planned for May 28th through Thursday of 2025. And the students will miss three days of school. Approximately 135 students will be traveling and trip expenses will be paid by parents and group fundraising. Number two is business professionals of America students from Southwestern Career Academy. The business professionals of America students from Southwestern Career Academy have the opportunity to compete in Orlando, Florida. The trip is planned for May 7th through the 11th, 2025. Approximately eight students will be traveling and trip expenses will be paid by career technical funds. Number four is the Southwest Career Academy Growth Start National Competition Team. They have the opportunity to compete in the national championship in Baltimore, Maryland. The trip is planned for May 1st through 5th, 2025. Approximately six students will be traveling and trip expenses will be paid by career technical funds. And number four, the Southwest Career Academy Skilled USA Students have the opportunity to compete at the Skilled USA National Leadership Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. The trip is planned for June 23rd through 28th of 2025. They will miss zero days of school. Approximately six students will be traveling and trip expenses will be paid by career technical funds. After reviewing these items, I move them for approval.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on now for items for action under personnel with Mrs. Martindale.
So this evening, I have seven personnel items involving 230 persons. It includes 14 certificated resignations, 28 administrative components, nine certificated changes in appointment, 95 certificated appointments, 30 of which are supplemental, 20 classified reservations, 10 classified changes in appointment, and 27 classified appointments. So I looked through all of these, very excited about progressive hiring. Please remember, we are always active. And I'm...
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
I mean, it's 30 in there, right?
Second. Thank you. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. Martindale. Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on now to public participation for non-agenda items. Kaya, you're going to start us out again.
I thought there was one.
I'm on my list.
I was told there was. Oh. This is shortened to me, truly. Maybe not to me, but short. I know you all love me.
How would you know?
So I want to acknowledge that I know our district is facing some very, very large fiscal or financial hurdles. And it truly terrifies me. I came up here and speak to you guys on the month because I care. And I, we have, we have a lot of board support for our head voucher program. And unfortunately, $500 million is being right now proposed to go to that program while cutting our funding drastically, both on the state and the federal side with Title I, IDEA, all of those things. And as you mentioned earlier, $150 million loss on return savings, which is wonderful to have, but now to lose. The way we, I see it, over the last year, we've spent almost a million dollars, about $880,000 on returning superintended salaries, new and past, hiring the search firm, all those things. And something I wanted to bring up because it seems right now in my brain, we're kind of bleeding, we're going to be bleeding money. And with that $880,000, we could have employed 26 days in this district. And something that our teachers and our staff members are, that I hear are begging for support in their classroom. They're begging for support on the buses and aides do that. That could have been an aide that's closer on the building to fill in here and there when it's needed at 26 different buildings. That's at $19.49 an hour for a $33,000 a year salary. That's not much to be an aide, quite frankly. That's a lot of work and not a lot of pay. So I would just, I know this is not designed to be interactive, so I don't truly expect a back and forth. But I think a plan for how we, as a board and as a district, like hope to move in a maybe more financially stable way to not spend the money on things that we don't necessarily need to. I think it'd be wonderful for everyone to hear about that.
Thank you so much. Next question, you're first.
Signed up and on the list. I'm Jayber Frederick, I'm a parent in the district. If you guys are familiar enough with the right house. I wanted to speak, first of all, I wanted to say thank you for letting me speak last week, or last month. Thank you for the resolution today. I'm glad, that must mean you like my ideas, because I did suggest that last month, doing a resolution that we are in support of Fair School Funding Plan. And since I spoke last month, that's when we just had the wine proposed budget. It has got worse since I spoke last, as you know. The House proposed budget is far worse and also loses essentially half of our rainy day funds. So I appreciate that you did that resolution today. And since you like my ideas, I thought I would propose another one today. I would respectfully request, and I know that, I know how some of you feel about vouchers because I was there for your campaigns and you spoke on them, and I know you're in support. But things were different with the state budget and the funding that we were getting. So I would like you to revisit your personal values and remember that you are an elected member of the school board and you're a good steward of our tax dollars. And therefore, your duty is to do what's best for the district, and it should always be in service of the kids. So vouchers hurt our students. Vouchers hurt our public schools. Vouchers hurt our teachers. Vouchers hurt their STRS, actually also, nobody talks about that. And vouchers hurt Ohio. I would like, next month, I would love to see a resolution or even a discussion in public since we didn't discuss, we, I don't know if everybody knows, but we were in a coalition for vouchers, a lawsuit against vouchers to try to recoup some of the money that gets taken in public tax dollars and give it to private schools. I could do a whole history lesson on this. I know way more about vouchers than I ever cared to know. So I could speak on this in many capacities, but today I just really want to ask, have this request, and I'm going to give you some reasons that I think that this is the right decision. So we were in the voucher lawsuit for many, many years. We, this board left it last year. There wasn't a discussion or a vote on it, which is why I'm asking for us to have one next month. And I hope that at the end of that, we would rejoin the coalition lawsuit, which is actually going to court this summer. We have a really good, as a lawyer, I have looked at the constitutional claims that have been brought forward, and it's a really, really good case. So here's why we need to rejoin the lawsuit and fight against vouchers. First of all, vouchers are defunding our public schools. They, your job as a board, as an elected Board of Education for public schools is to be good stewards of the public tax dollars. If you rejoin the lawsuit, you are directly protecting district funding, helping with long-term financial planning. Because we will be recouping money that we are losing in other ways to the state right now. It's a proactive step to protect our resources. It helps strengthen your relationship with and builds trust between you and the community. It also continues to support the most marginalized students because, as many are probably aware, private schools don't have to take just everyone. Public schools do. Public schools are for everyone. Private schools are not. They can refuse to admit kids with disabilities. They are not required to all IEPs. They can, they can, they cannot admit students because they've had a disciplinary problem in the past. They cannot admit students because they have behavior issues, because of socioeconomic status, because they are of color. They can not admit students for any reason they want, and there is nothing against that. Public schools are for everyone. That's why public tax dollars are for public schools. As, here's a, I just want to throw out a few stats on vouchers. Just a few numbers. 1.2 billion, that's the amount of taxpayer dollars that are going, that went to vouchers last year. 140,000, a family afford, making 140,000 a year, can get 100% vouchers. 150,000, there are more families receiving vouchers that make over 150 than there are that make less than 120,000. 77.3, that's the percentage of state funding for public schools that's actually going to public schools. 89%, that's the percentage of high students that are being educated in our public schools. 89% are only getting 77.3% of funding. 5 billion, that's the total amount of taxpayer dollars that have been spent into vouchers since they started in, I think, 97, something like that. 4.5 billion, that's the total increase in Ohio's property taxes since vouchers started. So as a good steward of our tax dollars, please fight for our tax dollars. Fight for them for our kids, because vouchers hurt Ohio. And thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Marlo Root. I'm here to...
I'm here to support a family who has supported my family for many, many years.